Okay, call a meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission to order. And I will start off by calling the role. Commissioner Bradbury, here. Commissioner Spoltes, absolutely. Commissioner Brown, here. Commissioner Burkhardt, here. Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Hertzler and Commissioner Dongrass, it's here, just in time. Okay, and the thing staff tonight is Robin Goldsberg Grant, Roxanne Robles, and our ever faithful Michelle. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Everybody have a chance to look at them?
I'm moving through the script.
Second, any changes or corrections to minutes you recommend? If not, I want to say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. All right, Michelle, is there anybody in the waiting room for public attendance?
There is not.
Okay, then we will move right out to our agenda item, which is the update on outreach engagements.
Okay, I think I will start, so it's kind of a trifecta. We're updating the comprehensive plan update, a little bit on that. And then Roxy is going to update us on both the Climate Action Plan and the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Oh, hey, Commissioner Ford.
Oh, hey, sorry to interrupt you as you're just getting kicked off. Is the, are the cameras working? I don't see any of you, and maybe I'm supposed to.
Oh, I think we should.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah? Better? I've been in the rain for a good chunk of today, so I didn't really want to be seen as much, but but here I am. Yeah, so, so just a little bit. First, did, has everybody had a chance to look at the public participation plan that was attached to the agenda? I can pull it up on the screen. I hate reading things to people, so, but we can go through it if you'd like. And then certainly any observations or questions. And then I'll sort of just give you kind of coming attractions and things that are scheduled. So you know what we've got coming up here. Me, and this is a All right, I turned it on. Um, thank you for that. It's that, that's one of my intent. Uh, okay. Maximize that. It really is just two slides, the very pretty picture. And I put this up because we have, we've been working on branding for our comprehensive plan update. And one of the things that we landed on today was our motto, our tagline, which is charting our course 2044. Kind of a nautical theme and may seem silly, but you know, as we, as we go through this process, and we're working on a logo, you will see that as soon as we have a little more discussion on what that will look like. But we want to have continuity and branding is an important part of what we're sort of selling to the community is something that they should care about and be involved with and participate in. So charting our course and only other thing, I just wanted to give you sort of a rundown. March 27th passed, City Council did adopt the public participation plan that I sent out to everybody. It's a little more high level than I know we kind of wanted to get into more details. It talks about more broadly themes and types of events and types of focus groups and things and how we're going to reach them. We don't have a strict calendar of events from now until, you know, December of 2024, certainly. But we're putting together the schedule in more granular form, and that should be ready either by the end of next week, but definitely by the next time the commission meets. Tomorrow, Roxy has been working on our website. That will be a point of contact. It will have background information, what the comprehensive plan is, why we update it, and again, why it affects people and why they should care. It will have the calendar of events, ways for people to connect with us. At some point, we'll have surveys and things through the website and then ways for folks to contact us to get on a mailing list so that we can keep track and let them know what's coming up. We have a presentation to City Council by Bill Grimes, who you all have met. That's May 8th, and then on May 8th and May 9th, we are going to do some focus groups. And we have it completely landed on what those groups, you know, consist of. It's, you know, it's always hard to sort of pick and choose who, you know, we've talked in here about sort of who we might reach out to. And there's been, I won't say pushback, but different direction on initially it was going to be one-on-one interviews. But that, as you might imagine, you know, picking one person to represent, you know, sports clubs or something, or, you know, faith-based communities. You know, we don't want to have anybody feel like they're left out. So instead, we're going to do groups of maybe 12, maybe 15 folks. We'll have six of those, and those will be broken out over May 8th and 9th. And they'll be led by Bill Grimes, who has done this a lot. He knows, and the idea, as he has expressed, it makes sense to me, is to get sort of a general feeling from folks, you know, what works, what doesn't, what do you want to, what do you want this community to look like in 20 years? And how might we get there? So once he has gleaned information from those focus groups, then we do our big kickoff event, May 20th. And that will be informational, again, letting people know what the plan is, what the update is, and how they can participate and why they should participate. We have a list of folks that we will be contacting, both for the focus group interviews and and then for sort of general, you know, please come to the kickoff event and, you know, please agree to participate. And so, so we have sort of the basics, the bones laid out. It would be great if commissioners would come to our kickoff event on the 20th. Of course, you know, we have to sort of make sure there's not a quorum unit, you know, there are ways around it, but I know it's, it's, you know, we're always cautious here about having, having more than just a forum. So if we broke it down, right now, we're thinking it's a Saturday, 20th, and I'll send out more information as we get closer to it. But 10:00 AM to 2:00 in the afternoon, roughly. So maybe if we had, for those interested, I think it would be great to sort of hear what people have to say, to sort of, you know, be part of disseminating information. Entirely up to you, of course. But if you, if you are interested, maybe we could break it down to, you know, hour chunks or whatever. So a couple of folks want to come, you know, 10 to 11, whatever. We can talk about that and give me your ideas. But, but that's sort of our first big, you know, public event. And as we've discussed, you're sort of, you know, ambassadors and communicate with the folks, our citizens all the time. So I'm interested to hear what your thoughts are about participating in that. But right now, that really is all I have. Again, if you want to go through anything that jumped out at you in the public participation plan, ideas that you have about the outreach event, it's open for discussions. So I got.
Okay. Who was it start? Okay. I would love to have participated in the events, unfortunately, on May 8th. I've been waiting by the way over to Blue Moon and getting on the ship back to Vancouver, so I missed all of those events.
They will have more.
Okay.
Yeah, that's terrible.
It's not unfortunate, it's unfortunate that it's spending.
Yeah. It really, as we start to, I mean, this is sort of the big, you know, this is what it is, this is what it means overview. We'll be getting feedback, I'm quite sure. We'll, we'll, I envision, you know, sort of areas where we focus, you know, transportation over here and housing and land use and stuff. And people will have things to say, and we'll have, you know, handouts, questionnaires, things for folks to, to, you know, again, give us their, their feedback and insights and stuff. But as we move forward, we plan on having a table at, you know, every other farmer's market, at the downtown events, and pretty much everything that we can find bodies for on our side will be present a lot. So, so this isn't, this isn't the be all end all. I just think it'll be interesting to see, number one, who shows up, turns out, and what do they have to say?
Robin, are we looking for geographical distribution in that focus groups?
We are, we are. We're thinking sort of the, you know, the traditional sort of, you know, waterfront, uptown and north, kind of the three major hubs, if you will. And so we want representation from each of those. It could be homeowners groups, it could be, you know, the business community, a mixture of all. And then maybe a couple groups that are people interested in specific topics. So maybe, you know, transportation, of course, is always super fun to talk about. So, yeah, but yeah, just the geographic distribution. And then, as I've said many times, trying to get folks that are not the usual players, that don't usually come out, that's, you know, a little bit more of a challenge. But I think letting them know this is an opportunity, not just the focus groups, but that's a good, you know, starting point to see if we can get folks to come out. I think I may have mentioned before, maybe not. I've been contacting like the apartment manager for one of our Section 8 apartments that I didn't even know we had Section 8 housing, honestly. I know. But I found them, and I'm hoping that she will agree to participate, if not in the focus group, that to come out and show up and, yeah, let us know what she thinks and the folks that she, you know, sees day in, day out. So, yeah, the Fish Food Bank, you know, some of the folks, again, that interact with segments of our community that we don't often see in this building.
The focus groups, are you planning to record those? Or can we?
That's a good idea. Well, there's a double-edged sword. I wasn't, we can think about it. But what, what we want out of that is for people to feel comfortable sharing whatever, could be negative. So we want them to be honest, and I don't want that to be, we can ask, maybe if anybody feels comfortable, but I think that could be inhibiting for some folks to really be honest about what they think. I haven't found people to be really restrained in that, in that, at least in, you know.
I've been to a lot of focus groups and I've never seen
Nobody's holding back.
Being, being recorded.
Okay, all right.
The other, the other option is to just video the things that interest an audience room, which is separate, where we might attend.
To, oh, interesting, okay. That's a good idea. Let me and sitting at my desk. Some way of capturing what's happening and what we're hearing back. I mean, I know that, that Bill will be talking about that. He's going to be at the outreach event, and he's also, I think, two of the focus groups are scheduled for the morning and early afternoon on the 8th, and then he presents to the council. So he is going to be talking about what he gleaned from those first two focus groups. But let me, yeah, we'll talk about how to capture that and how to make, yeah, what came out of that available for, for everybody.
My specific request would be to either see a recording or watch the focus group from a private room or a remote room. Probably not interested in minutes or synopsis.
Okay. Let me talk to, I, I I see the value in it. Okay. I'm making a, I will try to go and just get his feedback. He's done this a number of times. I have not. But I see, I see the value of sharing the
Where do you think you'll go?
Uh, here.
The first room?
Um, maybe this room, yeah, 15, maybe this room. Maybe, you know, kind of depends on what's going on Monday. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be any conflicts either here or even in the, in our conference room. 15 might be pushing a little bit. We'll see how many, how many folks, you know, respond and want to participate before we know. But yeah, probably, probably in this room, if we get a lot of respondents.
Other comments? All right, okay. Thank you very much. Next topic.
Okay, so we're going to talk about Climate Action Plan first, and then we'll do a deeper dive into the Urban Forestry Management Plan, public engagement as it relates to the proposed goals for the plan. So Climate Action Plan, just an update on where we are. We should have a draft in the next week or so. We held our public workshop last Wednesday. We had, I think, around 15 participants and felt a lot of good feedback, some feedback that was expected and some interesting ideas, so the consultant is synthesizing that right now. At the workshop, they also went over our emissions profile. So you can see that it's broken down into a couple of different sectors. And of course, each of those categories contains a lot of different information. If you want to see the real, like, nerdy, intense spreadsheet, I could try and see if the consultant would want to share that with you. But it's, there's a lot in it. So energy and natural gas is about 30% of our emissions profile. You can see electricity is very low, that's because headline uses hydropower, so it has almost no emissions. Our biggest source of emissions is, as you imagine, transportation. So armored vehicles, cars, trucks, 37% off-road equipment. That's things like lawn mowers and maybe ATVs, things like that. And then aviation, that is the amount. It's not like we have, we don't have an airport here, but what the consultant did was get flight information from CTEC and they kind of scale back to our population.
Commissioner Jordan has a question.
No, yeah.
Hey, thank you. Emissions, is this greenhouse gas emissions? Is this, he's so particular, what was the emission?
Yeah, greenhouse gas, thank you for that.
Greenhouse gas, okay, got it.
And then land use, my understanding of land use is that it is the basically conversion from like, you know, a non, or a permeable surface to a permeable surface. That one is a little bit more complex. I honestly think I should probably study that a little bit more. And then refrigerants is AC and refrigerators. Those emit greenhouse gases and also just the chemicals themselves are.
I'm curious about a couple of things. First, just a general comment, and I, in terms of things as a community, we can address applying aviation missions that occur far from us to something that we would have to address since general comment.
Well, some
But when it comes to refrigerants, I thought for 20 years or so now, companies that make refrigerators, air conditioners, and so on, had, had to use freons and other kinds goulas that would not contribute to emissions.
And I don't think they're as bad as they used to be, but they still
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Some are trying to convert to just into CO2 instead of a refrigerant as the
And as far as the aviation, I mean, using planes, traveling by plane, it creates an enormous amount of greenhouse gas emissions. And if we're not, if we're not calculating for that as a community, then we just, I don't know, put all that burden on to CTEC? Like, that doesn't necessarily make sense because of people in Gig Harbor that are buying the flights that are traveling by plane. So that's why that's included in our greenhouse gas emissions.
When I saw aviation, I assumed that you've built your airport out here.
Right.
And that's not included?
Uh, no, they don't, they don't have data for that. I'm not even sure that's within the city. It's not.
It's not, what is
You know, CTEC, right, yeah. So with the use of private planes or whatever, I just think they did, it wasn't, they didn't have the data. Yeah, CTEC is required, I think, to, to publish data, private airports like that may not be, I don't know, or municipal airports, smaller airports, I don't know. Uh, Commissioner Jordan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was going, kind of where the commissioners were going to. I'm a little bit concerned, so when I'm in greenhouse gases, I'm a little bit concerned if we do it this way, we're double counting. Because CTEC is definitely taking into account the greenhouse gas emissions from planes arriving and departing. And I just, it doesn't feel right to me. I, I, I think if you had a circle outside of this that said, hey, you know, gig, city Gig Harbor population generates about 8% of CTEC's air emission and greenhouse gas emissions. That's one thing, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's representative for it to be in our pie.
What do you mean by double counting?
Well, CTEC is going to calculate their greenhouse gas emissions, right? And so their 8%, the R8% is in their 100% calculation. And to me, that's a, that's a double count. I think it's interesting to say, hey, like, based on our population of CTEC's greenhouse gas emissions, which are in the thousands of tons, we contribute 8% of that. That's an interesting kind of side, but I don't think, I just, I'm worried we're mixing apples and oranges with, because you're looking at what we generate in our geographic area, I think, for most of this, for the other ones here. And the airport, if it's, is not part of that, it's not in our geographic area. I don't know, that's just me.
I mean, it's kind of the same type of calculation for on-road vehicles, though, because, you know, someone may drive through the city, but then to somewhere else. You know, are we going to, like, break down every single trip? Yeah, like, I just don't understand how we would do such a thing. So
Well, but
The plan is both to calculate for the city and understand what municipal operations can, how we can do better than our municipal operations. But I think it's also because it's a public document, making folks aware of how their behavior affects greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, I know, I understand the behavior piece.
The, the double counting concept, though.
Like, on-road, if you're talking about Washita, Washita will calculate the greenhouse gas emissions on Highway 16. So I'm, I was, when I read that, I was assuming it was everything like in, outside of a state highway in Gig Harbor. So I don't know, just a different way to think about it. But whatever you all decide, I would be really clear about, like, what's in our geographic area? What and what's not, and what's just the pass-through, through our geographic area.
Yeah, I, I don't have a narrative from them yet on the emissions analysis. So I just wanted to let you all know what information I had. But I'll make sure to ask them and make sure that that's super clear in the narrative. So thank you all for these comments and questions.
Roxy, explain that calculation again, 8% for aviation? Because if that's based on population, we're a much smaller piece of the greater Seattle, Tacoma.
It's 8% of the city's transportation, not 8% of all of Seattle.
Gotcha, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions about the, yeah?
It's only because I'm unaware. And if we're talking about this from an aspect of what we have control over for the community, what is putting out the natural gas emissions that is 25%? Because I don't think fairly small number of homes in the area that have natural gas pumped in there. So what's, what are the big contributors to that?
From a municipal side, to me?
Well, within the geographical area, for which they were coming this.
Oh, yeah, it's for, it's home use, that's data for the community.
Is it, is it just ones that are naturally pumped, or is it the people who have, like, like, my neighbor has, has
Yeah. It's both.
It's both. Okay, so it is both people with private gas and those that have it pumped, from the S A.
Great. Today I want to talk about the preliminary survey results. The consultant is currently developing a what am I trying to say, synthesis of both survey and the workshop. But this is from the online survey. This was also collected a day before the survey closed. So there could have been more, a few more responses, but likely not. So I just want to give some context as to who answered the survey. And the survey was distributed mainly via email blasts and posts on our websites and the Gigabyte newsletter. So it was through all the kind of public channels that the city has. I also sent it to a number of just kind of like environmentally conscious organizations in town.
Just one comment there, I really did not like the term genderqueer. 25 years ago, the term queer was a ugly slur.
Well, language can change, and that is the term that people use for being gender fluid a lot of the time.
How about LGBT?
That is still possible, but that encompasses a number of sexualities and genders. That's not specific to this particular type of identity.
I think the broad serves everybody without offending anybody in the subject. If you're not a man or a woman, you're going to be other, right?
This is, I think I'd like to I think I'd really like to focus on the content of the survey rather than the changing language of gender and sexuality. So we can see that the city of Gig Harbor has about 54% folks that identify as female, 46% male in their population. And then it's kind of skewed toward people who identify as women within this survey. So just in context for who was answering the survey. Gig Harbor is predominantly white. The folks that answered the survey are predominantly white. Age, so what I got from the census wasn't a very granular breakdown of age, but you can see about 24% of people in our 2020 census were under 18. About the same amount were over 65. You can see the age breakdown of who answered the survey was kind of skewed towards 55 and You can see the age breakdown of who answered the survey was kind of skewed towards fifty-five and, um. And then income median for an individual in town is fifty-four thousand, for household is ninety-six thousand, and then you can see that based on who took the survey, it's definitely skewed towards higher-income folks, so we have mostly higher come white women taking this survey as compared to our kind of city as a whole. Um, so, awareness of climate-related impacts, most of the folks that entered the survey were, uh, have some familiarity or considered themselves well informed about climate change issues, so that's good, that also speaks to just the nature of who would take a survey like this, they're probably gonna be interested in climate action. Um, most are concerned about climate change impacts, kind of checks out with who would take a survey of this nature. Um, threats to public health, I thought this was pretty interesting, a lot are strongly or somewhat concerned, um. I think maybe some folks don't know what the, I guess maybe I shouldn't put my own concern on this, but yeah, some folks aren't concerned about public health, but maybe folks just don't, uh, understand the connections to climate change and public health. So, about threats of pollution to air and water, extremely concerned. Makes no sense, uh, well-being in future generations, also makes sense, a little bit concerned about the folks that aren't concerned. Any questions so far, I can go through these, or we can take some time to discuss them, if you all want.
Questions?
Yeah, if you all, uh, can probably like, two-thirds away through these.
I, I do have one, Roxanne, and I wonder if we're leaving out those people that might be more of the conservative in, of the political scale. And, because we're really, as you mentioned, I think we're getting people who are formed and concerned about climate change. And I think that's not the full spectrum, but then again, I don't know how we get there.
Uh, we do, we will have, um, another survey going out through Flash Boat, which I think we received an update on that. Uh, so they kind of go through voter rolls and they get a more diverse kind of perspective, so this is just through Surfer Monkey, this is a completely voluntary survey, so you do make a good point, it isn't completely, like we saw from the demographics, it's not completely um, representative of everybody that lives in the city, but, um, that's why we have kind of Flash Boat to.
Does it sift out for those who live just within the city limits, those compared just outside and.
Um, I'm not sure exactly how Flash Boat works, but I know it is within the city limits, yeah. Um, any questions about the content of the, the survey answer here? Um, okay, concerned about threats to economic vitality, folks aren't as concerned. Uh, public infrastructure, also not as concerned. Um, urban trees, landscapes, open space, extremely concerned. Uh, seniors that involve rural populations, um. Yeah, a lot of concerned, also concerned about the folks that aren't concerned. Just go to societal costs, um. Yeah, most people are just very concerned, so, um, that's the last question, or do we have any kind of comments on what kind of feedback?
Yeah, I just want to group personally, I do have one.
Okay.
Thank you, gee folks. Okay. You asked about seniors in there, but for me, for me, major concern is my kids and my grandkids.
I mean, there were several questions about.
Future generations.
Yeah, yeah, we're being future generations. Yeah.
And that got a big, a big response, they're like, yeah.
Definitely people are registering.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know if there's, uh, how you would get to that, I, I'm not seeing any questions in here. Other than the first one, you know, my, my general sense is people are very ignorant about what is actually being done. Whether it be, for example, by the city of Gig Harbor, local businesses, or, or on a broader scale outside of our, well, community. There's a lot of concern out there that might be addressed if people really and true were informed about what is actually being done.
And what do you think people are missing out on?
Probably a great deal, I mean, you know, we, we might talk about, uh, something like vehicle emissions. We should all know that vehicle emissions have brought, been brought to near zero on modern automobiles, that's a big deal, that, that is, you know, I, I was in LA. And, and I know with the slogan, you didn't burn your eyes, it was horrible. That isn't there now, because the cars have been cleaned up. And there are a great many things like that happening that have been done, and I just have a sense that people are not aware of that. I, I can't validate it in any particular way, I just use cars as an example, but my, my point is these things have been taken pretty seriously by communities, federal governments, state governments, major corporations for many years, great many things of progress have been made that, that I don't think commonly would. That's just what I admit.
Um, I, I would question the statement that cars have no emissions because they're still burning fossil fuels would generate carbon dioxide, which is the main greenhouse gas.
You know, I, I will, I will get off my sword, but I will just say, and you, you've heard it too, but, but the latest data indicate that methane is a much greater threat than CO2. And then we've got to eat, a lot of that methane comes from, it's the cars. Uh, but a lot of it comes from, from the cattle and other animals we raise to eat.
As the city of Gig Harbor, what do you think we could do better to educate folks that you think are missing out?
Uh, I, I think when we get to that point, we need to be able to educate people about what this city is doing. There, there's examples of that and what you can get to next, the urban forestry. We have things going on there now, that, unless somebody has an issue that they want to cut down the trees, that they aren't aware of. Uh, and, and part of that program is to make people aware of those things. And to increase, obviously, the, the things that the city is doing to address urban forestry.
Yeah, so I think.
The same thing is true of climate, climate change, frankly, I think it is tremendously overhyped. And people buy into that in a very big way, the way to offset that is to say, this is what has been done, and this is what is being done now as we speak.
Well, if I can jump in, so, as you may know or may not know, the, um, there's legislation that is likely to be signed in pretty soon that will make, um, uh, climate and, and resiliency a mandatory element in, in our comprehensive plan. The CO2 plan is looking forward, so there's certainly a place for, you know, this is where we are now, including, you know, having the city buy a bunch of, uh, electric vehicles and, and charging stations and all that, um, so when, when we get to the point of, of, you know, putting together our, our element, it will include an inventory of things, you know, policies and, and things that have been done, but we're looking forward and we have to, we have to talk about this stuff, now, it seems like, you know, it's, it's being alarmist, or, you know, whatever, I mean, well, I mean, the numbers.
Not, not the city being alarmed.
Okay.
The, the population has demonstrated in the survey.
That's, this is people in the city.
Right.
It's a particular demographic in the city.
That responded.
That responded.
Correct.
That gave those answers, and that, this may be an indication of their overall state of mind or view, the, their worldview, and it shows that these particular things, I would love to see someone who's sort of uncoaching that, like, the, the contributors to the emission. I had no idea what those were, and like, I, I had to ask about the natural gas, what is creating that natural gas? Educating people on what is contributing, and then how, how the city is either taking steps to reduce it, or how they can take steps to reduce it, I just, and getting a broader swath of the calculation than.
We can, we can certainly do a deeper dive on the emissions inventory, um, almost sure how, how into the mix you all wanted to get, but it's clearly, I think, you do, so.
Kind of educating the populace on what the major contributors are, and thus, and then directly addressing what the city is doing and how it impacts those, is. That's my big, yeah, feedback.
So, I would also say that this climate action plan is that first step for the city to be taking these things, and then we'll get to kind of, the way that we implement it, I think, will be a lot of outreach and education, but, yeah, we don't have a lot of, this is our first climate action plan, so we are definitely getting there. Um, all right, any other questions on our outreach survey? All right. Um, so. All right, so, um.
Are we going to, uh, urban forest now? I have a point to make on the, uh, climate action plan, there's a term in there increased resiliency, which I don't understand. And I, I think my advice is to work with your consultant to try to reduce the number of abstractions, abstract terms that are, are in the plan. Uh, maybe if there was a definition of what resiliency might include, uh, I'd, I'd be able to understand it, but.
Yeah, I think that will definitely be part of the fuller plan, but resiliency in resilience is kind of a, it's become a very common term within climate action planning and just climate change kind of discussions in general, and it means the ability for a city to rebound from catastrophic events and to rebound from, um, sea level rise, which is uh, imminent, and it's going to affect Gig Harbor, and that can take any number of actions through planning and emissions reduction. So, I understand it is an abstraction, but, um, I think it'd be really difficult to list out every single way in which, which we consider a city to be resilient, but we will definite, I can definitely come up with a definition.
I, I think it's kind of a stumbling point when you get to those abstractions that mere mortals may not.
Jargony in, in a way.
Reminds me of, yeah, learning to love the bomb.
We'll figure that out. Um, okay, so with the, um, oh, do we need to move on to like another item?
No, it's all in the same.
Great.
There's no more questions out of the current issues. Urban forestry.
Okay. So, um, as you probably saw on the staff report, um, I've, I've taken the result that we got from the urban forestry management plan. I thought we were done with the survey being open, but I guess the mailers got to a couple of people late, so we are going to close it on, um, Monday, I don't know how many more, uh, answers we're gonna get, but, um, I was hoping this would be kind of our complete results, but it, it's not. Um, we had almost two hundred and twenty responses thus far to the survey, though, so I feel like, um, it's pretty good, um, participation, and I don't know that a couple more people would skew the answers that much, so real look at, uh, survey responses, and then I kind of pulled out goals that are proposed goals and how they might relate to how folks are responding, so, um, just a reminder of how the consultant has kind of gauged how Gig Harbor is performing, we're getting kind of like a C, C minus in urban forestry based on kind of all of these different criteria. Uh, and then, just so you understand kind of why the goal types are named the way that they are, um, some goals relate more to urban forest sustainability, uh, some relate more to municipal operations, and some relate more to community collaboration engagement, so those urban forest sustainability goals, those are kind of having the twenty-year outlook for how we maintain and improve our urban forest, municipal operations are like more specific to what the city can do on a day-to-day or year-to-year basis to improve our urban forest, and then community collaboration engagement, that's kind of meant to strengthen, um, community ties to urban forest and, uh, to educate folks.
Good, could I, uh, just ask that you, can I give us an overview at this point of, of where this is going? At some point, you're gonna present this plan to the council for approval, ready? And are you gonna have a staff, a staffing plan and a budget as well?
Um. There are some suggestions for staff, staffing within the plan, um. That type of budget, I think, would be up to council.
Can take direction from council.
Yeah.
The, the impression I have, I, I was really impressed with all of the detail that you provided in advance of this meeting, it was, it was very well presented. But the impression I have is that there, there are far too many goals uh, that I, I could imagine the Department of Fifty, uh, urban foresters, uh, running around, uh. Charge of a few of these goals. And, and I think, uh, looking at, at it overall, it seems to me that you're gonna have to prioritize and phase.
Of course.
And so, at what point do you think we'll see that?
The prioritization.
In, in the phase that you have.
Um. I think that we'll, we'll definitely, yeah, we'll be presenting this to council, I'm sure they will have some feedback on that based on all of the context within the plan, um, I can, I don't know that the consultant was going to have any kind of prioritization matrix, but, um, I can work on that with them, if that's something that you really want to see.
Well, it's not that I want to see it, but, I mean, whatever you present to the council, I'm guessing will be approved, but then, the, the next point is how much money are you gonna get to hire how many people to attack this thing, and it's an awful lot to attack this.
Yeah.
Uh, so what guidance would you give the urban forester or the arborist about what his priorities should be, or what should be expected of them in the first year or so? I mean, I, i- it's, it's an enormous body of work that you can find here.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I concur with you, pushing down, it is certainly a very well thought-out plan.
Yeah.
Very robust, and also very manpower-intensive, you probably don't have the resources to do it all as. So, some sort of graduated, prioritized implementation, quality-wise.
Yeah, um. And again, these are also draft goals, so it's not like these are set in stone, if there's things that you want to change about these goals, this is your opportunity, tell us, and we can also, as we go through all these goals, I mean, maybe you can chime in on what you'd want to see prioritized, so, um, yeah, it's definitely, this is definitely a discussion, it's not me just telling you what's gonna be planned. Any other comments to that effect? Do we lose Jason, Jordan?
No, there'd be still four people.
Oh.
Still have.
Okay. Oh, we have more than two twenty, we have almost two forty, okay, so, a little bit more context on who took the survey, um, again, definitely skewed much older.
Question there, do we have a larger than average senior population in Gig Harbor, as far as we see?
I mean, I think a big part of, and I mean, you will see this in a lot of public surveys, uh, older folks, they have more time, they're retired, uh, they typically take a bigger interest in their community, because they're not like raising kids and, you know, trying to climb the corporate ladder or whatever, um. So, yeah, this is pretty typical, and Gig Harbor does skew older, yeah. Um, so, relationship with trees. Um, so relationship with trees in Gink Harbor, most folks were residents, um, but. All across the the board as far as folks who are um interested in trees. Um, this is pretty um. Both surprising and not surprising, um. But I was, I'm a little shocked that folks didn't think we had tree work regulations. However, I think that would explain why we get so many calls every single time a tree comes down. Because folks are just assuming that the city has no awareness.
I I'll have more to say on this later on, we can turn it toward the end of the survey. But. Trying to track down. The regulations for cutting the tree in Gink Harbor. Is difficult. And I'm speaking somebody, and that's my own experience with it. Somebody who knows we have those regulations since I'm spotted.
Yeah, we do have plenty of citizens in this part.
Yeah. A lot of great uh things I've worked for also have like a, you know, how do I kind of drop down on their website? And there's sometimes a whole page dedicated to trees and I think that's the thing.
Yeah, our website needs. Needs help in in user, yeah, friendliness and usability.
We do have a how do issue with the trees.
For what you said.
I know, I know. It's on the list.
Um, so experience with uh tree regulations, um, I. A lot of people also haven't used tree regulations without, which also might explain why they didn't know anything about it. Um, I took out the not applicable remove to kind of get a better sense of how the folks that actually have interacted with our. Tree regulations feel about it, um. Probably could have guessed that most people find it difficult and strict, most don't wanna apply for permits at all like ever, so. Um, that would make sense, um. But there was a good number of folks, you know, like I think it's like thirteen that thought it was easy and reasonable or lenient, so. Kind of across the map, I'll share. Uh, and hopefully that will be. I think if we were to get a dedicated page and also with the tree ordinance update, I think hopefully this will skew to easy and reasonable, we hope. Um, so now we're gonna get a little bit more into the goals, um, so this question, trees are important to the quality of life in Gink Harbor. Most people would agree really strongly that they are, so um some goals that are related are. Maintaining citywide canopy canopy coverage, um, increasing canopy in key areas, meaning those areas that um. Excuse me, don't have um high canopy coverage, so average canopy coverage of the city is about forty four percent. But we have some areas that are low, as low as like thirty five percent. So I didn't, that would mean identifying areas, those areas that have lower canopy coverage and making sure we put new trees there. And then also establishing a heritage tree designation, which we talked about when we talked about the draft uh tree ordinance.
Proxie.
Yeah.
How do you count canopy?
Um, it's uh remote sensing, so you, it's, you know, like flyover satellite data when all the trees are flushed out. And then you get a sense of how much the canopy is covered.
So it's an actual measure?
Yeah.
There there was one statement in in the uh material you you prepared for us. That seemed amazing to me, and that is, if I understood it correctly. The canopy. Coverage today is essentially the same as it was in two thousand and seventeen. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
And I I just uh hung up on that, I mean, how could that be with the development we've seen in the last five years and? And the clearcutting you've seen in some areas from school sites and housing developments and the rest, yeah. Don't you think that that's kind of an incredible statement?
Uh, well, a couple of things at play, so existing trees are getting bigger, having more canopy coverage. Uh, people are still planting trees even when they're cutting some down, so. It's not like kind of a one, so. It's not like the trees are just gone and then not replaced, so there is some margin that is keeping up. Um.
This is city losing.
Yes. So, um, and then also, you know, the city is. Big, you know, the city is like thousands of acres, so. Clearcutting, even if it's one acre, is actually not gonna affect the canopy coverage that much, I mean, obviously, it's not great to lose an acre. Trees, that's not what I'm saying, but it won't necessarily affect that remote sense canopy coverage a bunch of zoom, I think.
So you think that's probably an accurate statement? Thanks.
Um, any comments on uh these goals? Of course, they're like in more detail in your um. Staff report, but are these goals that you would want to keep? Are they high priority goals? Are they low priority goals? Um, do you think they'll be expensive? Let me go.
Well, in looking at that, you know, in terms of priorities here, just the three of this here, I say it kind of goes. Goal, you have one is top priority, goal you have two. Is number two priority and C five is somewhere further on that list.
I would say C five is probably the easiest to accomplish.
And I'm not saying it's not important, I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah.
You got it too.
Yeah.
That's further down.
So easy to, easy to uh accomplish, but not high priority. And then the other two, I I think are definitely higher priority, but they're gonna take their time for sure. Um, any other comments on these?
Yeah, I ask, it feels like the second one is the most. Um. Cost intensive one to accomplish, but I don't actually know how manpower and cost intensive the first goal would be. Like, couldn't we do that when, couldn't we make it a high priority and a fairly easily accomplish goal? Since it's maintained?
Yeah, I think so, that would require, yeah, uh, again, adopting policies. Redoing the tree ordinance so that we aren't losing canopy and folks are having to replant. I think is a big part of that. Um. But yeah, identifying thinking areas and actually planting trees, it, from a labor standpoint, I think that is a bit more expensive and we don't have. To top Rashford, um, Chris Brown's point, we don't have a dedicated arborist or like planting a TV.
Is that a reference to trees on city property property?
What do you mean? Oh, curious.
Why do you go to?
Um, well, the canopy cover is measured. You know, remote sense, so it doesn't necessarily distinguish between public and private trees.
Right.
But um. You know, some cities have canopy cover gold by zone, so it could be, you know, if you live in this area. You need to maintain or increase. Canopy cover in X, Y, Z ways, or the city can just can plant more in those areas as well.
Question I think is related to number two in the same topic, but it's something we don't, I'm gonna do. I think if I live right near her, I get some Tina watching briefly and they planted trees. Many trees right in that area and I'm curious if that is related to that, I can go and that is a city. Um, initiated. I can't say city initiative.
Actually. The rotary. The rotary.
Village of Private. And is. Is there some way to encourage more of that?
Definitely, I mean, yeah, I mean, I can't. I can't name every single one, but yeah, you bring up a good point, the city could also pull tree planting events. Buy trees and give them away, like, there's so many different ways to go about it, so. Yeah, it doesn't have to be like all mandates or and everything, but that's kind of like the. Having like a city mandate and then ha- having people try and meet things and kind of like the most efficient from the city like operations standpoint. But yeah, that's a good point, I mean, having tree planting events and tree giveaway, that's a great uh way to do that.
Well, and just for outreach to to things like the rotary.
Yeah.
Give them a little fact, you know, just like for road maintenance.
Yeah, and they actually adopt that section of land.
Yeah, oh, cool, they get, they get to put the names on it.
Yeah, so stewardship or adoption.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that. Um, it also could be an opportunity if if we go down the path of um of the bank. And mitigation bank, if we have, you know, funds that we're collecting. From folks who, for whatever reason, can't replant in kind or on their site, then we can use that money to to target where where we want.
They still require um community service for kids to. Excellent.
Yeah.
Outreach.
Yeah, volunteer a certain amount of hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Siri, uh. If we're at forty one percent now, what would be the? Goal? For the ideal?
Um.
To maintain that?
Yeah, really. Yeah, Gink Harbor is doing pretty good as far as canopy coverage, I mean.
I don't know, how how would that, how would that be?
Yeah, so I think like highest in our region, I think I remember from the. Urban tree uh cover report was like fifty four to fifty five.
Hmm.
Um, so it's not impossible in an urban setting to have really high canopy coverage, but um. Basically, yeah, we just really need to work hard to maintain what we have.
So it seemed we would place you have two then is is more. Of the emphasis and.
Yeah.
We would want the side there.
That's a good.
Attack. When you have two more than if you're doing okay.
Yeah. 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 Awesome, thank you all. Okay, so tree benefits, um, folks identified a lot of different um benefits of urban trees. Uh, primarily aesthetic beauty and wildlife habitat jump out, so some of the. Goals that I pulled out kind of related to this are managing species diversity and uh for some context, the reason that that's important. Is because if you have, for example, a city that's full of different uh maple species, if there's a certain uh pest or disease. That only attacks maples, there's opportunities for mass die. And that can be really, really devastating to the urban forest if all of your maples suddenly get. A disease, this happens in the northeast with um. I think chestnut trees, there's chestnut white and it's really hard to keep large populations of chestnuts alive in cities because there's this. Really uh persistent chestnut white. Um, so species deserve, diversity is important, um, as well as age diversity, and we'll get to that, um. Adding ecosystem services of trees into climate action strategies, and I would even say maybe like stormwater planning.
Mm hmm.
Um, is an important goal because then that. You know, kind of formally identifies trees as infrastructure and that kind of. Of course, they're beautiful and they give us habitat, but it kind of demonstrates that the city sees this as an investment in infrastructure. And reducing stormwater runoff. And so it's also related to goal C five, which is establishing urban funding relationship to stormwater fees. So including tree benefits and stormwater management plans, funding tree planting and capital improvement projects, that's a big way to get uh trees planted. So if, you know, um. The city is redoing a street, replacing sewer, replacing water pipe, making it so that they have to plant, plant trees. Um, it will help more trees get better.
I really like C five because I think there is an opportunity to offset some other types of costs. And you could take some of those things that we find out of like spending on stormwater, put it in the trees, but the trees suck up the water.
Any other thoughts on priorities with within these three goals or other goals? Do you hate them? Do you like them? Or we can move on?
Thank you.
I think these are all, these three are all important.
All right. So uh tree maintenance, um. Luckily, seems like folks generally find their day to day with public trees fairly safe. Um, seems like a couple times a year folks run into um issues, but um I think that's only natural. So uh goal you have four is to plant suitable trees and schedule phase replacement, so um. It requires the state to track species performance, um, what that means, but I know that's a little bit jargony, but um. It would require us to do an inventory and to kind of identify those species that we have in the city already. And then based on how good or bad those um species that we have are doing in our climate in the city. Um, we would want to identify like, okay, these are species we want to keep planting. These are species that don't do so well, they cause damage, or they just don't thrive here, so we wanna um. Take them out, replace them. And then that also is related to like the relative performance index, that kind of means the same thing as the. And that's other school.
As it's stated, I would think it'd be a little bit lower priority. Certainly, we need to do part here about tracking energy. At least as you begin the process, it might be more of a manageable exception kind of thing.
Gotcha. All right. Um, again, tree maintenance, uh trees can become damaged or develop structural weakness. Um, again, very lucky that a lot of people aren't encountered this, um. So making a priority to conduct an inventory to document tree condition and risk, so this is kind of a condition for. A lot of other goals that you've saw and probably those that we're going through the staff report, like having an inventory. Would kind of make a lot of other actions possible, um. And just as as an FYI, I've applied for a grant with the Department of Natural Resources to perform the inventory, so hopefully that gets, hopefully we get the grant.
Hey, yeah, so good.
I hear your question.
I realize that the initial inventory will be the most labor intensive, but do you have an idea of what? The the time and labor requirement to to manage the tree inventory long term?
So the consultant has suggested as part of this plan that we do the inventory and um. They they have like a proprietary software that they're trying to sell you in the channel with a head called Treekeeper. And it's like specific to kind of managing urban forest populations. Um, I think we would need to do, I think they recommend like at least an annual kind of like. Kind of not necessarily going out and looking at every tree, but just kind of like review of the inventory.
Looking at projects that impact the trees or something.
Yeah, so I couldn't put like a necessarily like a. Uh, price tag on it or like a man hours. Number on it, but I think once the initial inventory is done and it becomes part of a workflow. Like a regular workflow, probably won't be like.
So it's something that when you guys put together this climate action plan and then treat and the forest plan that. Basically, the man hours required to maintain it will be built into the plan for you guys because it.
We don't know.
Like I said, I realized the initial one is the most labor intensive one, but that definitely. That definitely does require the regular.
Right, right, the plan is, you know, like, like the comprehensive plan, like all of our sort of plans, you've got. Policy goals and things that you aim for, um, the implementation is generally something that we codify. Um, and and so, you know, in this case, it might be less. I don't know if it would make its way into municipal code, but it would be part of our regulations. Um, and sort of SOPs for, you know, whether it's.
Standpoint because you guys are the ones stuck doing these things. Where does that fall in the priority list for you guys? Obviously, the initial inventory is high on the priority list because a lot of other things. Renegade.
So I think again to pressure Brown's point, like the recommendation that is gonna come, likely come out of this plan. And we can talk about it when we get to it would be to hire a staff person and, you know, they're in like a staff arborist, like their entire. You know. Day to day would be managing the inventory, but um. I mean, I think if, I think that is going to be like a task if that's the way that the city wants to go. Like, okay, do we have enough for this? Would we have enough for a full time person to do, you know, kind of mapping out the hours that we. So I could ask the consultant to go into a little bit of detail there.
That would be my true answer. That was my thought and the idea of how we prioritize things.
Yeah.
Well, I is is the consultant is part of the contract required about the resource analysis. In other words. How much resources and what kind of resources will it take to implement the recommendations that we.
What I've seen so far has been pretty general as far as like grants that are available. Um. We're spending about twenty to twenty five thousand a year on tree maintenance and planting. Um, which is. It's like, I don't know, you could look at that in a number of ways, but um I guess it's helping us like maintain. Whatever we have since we haven't seen a huge drop in um tree canopy coverage, but uh we could certainly do it better. You have a question?
Oh, well, I was just gonna add on to uh Mr. Sungrass's comment. Would you then, would you maybe want to concentrate your inventory on those areas that you've already identified as being a little more sparse? Off the trees. I mean, in other words, start in the. The areas that need more attention first.
The uh the citywide, the citywide inventory would be like a month long project. Where the consultant goes out and looks at every single tree on public property. So that we have like a really good idea of what we have, where it is and the condition that it's in. So they're going to get those kind of like lower canopy areas. And it's it the all, the whole city is gonna get done in a little time.
It would make sense to phase it in looking at those hotspots where you knew you had problems with the canopy first. Concentrate on those and then expand the inventory out from there.
If we were like resource limited and if for some reason we don't get this grant, I assume that we're going to. Those usually the N R, we got it last year and I think they usually prioritize folks that are.
Would also help identify those.
Yeah, so um, yeah, if if for some reason we put in, do it all at once. Uh, then yeah, that would probably be a good approach. Um, okay, any other comments on this one? Uh, so more about tree maintenance, um kind of across the board, not a ton of folks dissatisfied with. Public tree maintenance, but um some related goals are managing public tree population for age distribution. So um. That is kind of related to what I was talking about with the species diversity. You also want to have age diversity in a tree population. So if everything is just like saplings, then you're gonna get things maturing at one time and you're gonna get things dying at one time. So um again, that managing age distribution would require the city to develop the tree inventory. Add goals for age distribution and identifying kind of like a phased plan for removing and replacing. Trees so that we have a good distribution across the city. And then um another goal is to establish a interdepartmental working team. That would meet a couple times a year just to talk about trees. And if for some reason that we, you know, we can't hire a staff arborist. Or it's not doesn't end up being a priority or whatever. Um, this could potentially be a good way to kind of balance uh. The need for urban forest management with, you know, not having that super dedicated staff member.
Will the public trees for the most part be in parks or areas that are managed by the parks department?
Uh, it's parks and city right away, so long tree.
Which is the importance that it is. If those people.
Well, yeah, right now tree management is completely in public works. So having an interdepartmental team, so like making sure that, you know. Me as a planner, I'm talking to the folks, the maintenance folks that are actually working with the trees every day. And public works who's managing the budget for trees. And maybe someone in admin so that folks upstairs making big budgets, understand trees, why trees are important, having folks meeting regularly. To talk about that. That's kind of what that means. Any thoughts on the age distribution?
Well, I think it's it's kind of a complex thing to get your. Head around.
Yeah.
We'll be a little more like.
Sure. Okay. Um, tree planting, so um. Folks kind of want uh trees everywhere. I really, really like that a number of folks. Answered that they wanted to see more trees in shopping centers and commercial areas. Um, cause I think that means that folks, yeah, they want trees kind of like in their life all the time. And they recognize the benefits of having trees um over parking lots, shading, fetching stormwater, et cetera. Um. And uh so yeah, goals to plant trees annually um and to establish a tree bank fund. Um, do either of these goals jump out at you as high priority or low priority?
Well, plant trees annually is something that can be. A public private partnership, because we're talking about uh the service club. That was planting trees. And so that's something that I think you could work with. And the tree bank, that's something that uh probably your administrative folks can help you out a lot with. That doesn't really require any sort of specialized staffing.
No, not necessarily. Uh, the, I think the staff power in that would be. Kind of amending the code so that we have a tree fund and figuring out what we want to charge for what. Yeah, that would take some time to kind of. Vaness and get your.
Once you got that done, it becomes a self stating process.
Sure. Any other thoughts on on these or these seem like no brainers?
Sorry, I'm talking too much here today.
I think it was raining today, so folks just. Uh, it's also a lot. While taking all of this in. So city staffing, uh what do you think about hiring a staff arborist? Um. How many responses? So a hundred and thirty eight and almost a hundred forty said yes, so that's. Over.
Conditions would be.
Well, I think that just means that folks want to know more about it, and I get that, you know? Yeah, so um. Yeah, so these are kind of more direct, these are kind of like the direct costs, you know, training folks, getting folks certified in certain different. Forestry uh certifications and protocols and then potentially hiring able time or part time. Urban forester or arborist.
How how would an arborist fit in? Where what department would they be? Who would they report to? Who would assess their work, direct them, et cetera?
I always imagined it would be in public. Because they're the folks that manage trees now.
Right.
And the urban forester would be the person kind of coordinating work with the folks that are already doing maintenance. But the hope, the hope would be that the urban forester would be involved in planning. And long range and phase planning of this urban forestry plan.
Yeah.
But another advantage of having an urban forester is because. I don't think that their whole day can just be spent, you know, looking at plans or like directing tree maintenance. I think of of the real value would be to be doing like public outreach and education. Because as you can see, folks don't know a lot about our tree regulations and don't have a ton of experience. And I'm sure Michelle would love to stop getting calls. Yeah, I'm sure that would free up a ton of her time.
Yeah. Enforcement.
Yeah, oh yeah. So I think that there's an opportunity for this urban forester to really. To be probably live in public works, but help planning a whole lot. Um, yeah, what what do you all think about hiring a another staff person?
Whose job is to to coordinate, to build phone calls, to maintain the inventory, to. Coordinate the maintenance and the planting and with an eye to that species diversity. It would've been all of those things. Makes sense. It's just about. Making a convincing case and getting, I don't even know how one goes about getting additional funding. So I don't know what's involved in that.
We do have. When we reclassify job, that would be something that we could reclassify.
That's true.
That's a good point. And it's not getting, opening a new position.
Are anything that would allow? That certified arborist to then train a couple of people under him in public works to. Have maybe not his level qualifications, but higher level qualifications. I I don't know what kind of. Are the tree qualifications there on?
I mean, arborist, I mean, he as an ISA, which is like international agriculture association. Um, as his ISA arborist, he can't necessarily like train other folks to to get that qualification, but he could certainly teach them best practices.
And teaching best practice, but also are there. I don't know if there will be grants available that we could send people for training, or if there is additional training that they could get that would make them. They could kind of take over some things he does now so that he can do some of the higher level things and and.
Yeah.
Of achieving both of those goals.
Sure.
Limited resources.
Yeah. Any other comments on hiring a dedicated arborist?
I think generally it seems we we all think this is.
Yeah. Alright, um so public concerns, top concerns for get covered trees, uh. Can't be lost, habitat loss and development. Those are all kind of related, but ended up uh being high priority. Um. I think folks were able to choose for both um. For the this one and this one. They were allowed to choose kind of like as many as they wanted.
Hmm.
Um, so to address concerns, maintain a routinely updated urban forestry plan. So updating it every five to ten years. I think that's pretty manageable. Um, and then perform here, oh, let's just say periodic, no period. Periodic review of the tree ornaments, uh also I think pretty manageable. Um. But do any of these, do either of these jump out as, you know, would be one not priority, the other high priority or vice versa?
They're interrelated.
Okay. Alright, we can keep going. Uh, public outreach, how do you want information on urban forestry? So website resources came out ahead, so I think that means that we should, I can make a tree page. Um, interpretive trails and displays and also guided nature walks. I think that means folks kind of want to see maybe more interpretive signs or more things in parks kind of talking about trees. So definitely something to think about.
Yeah.
Um. So um. Establishing a tree board is a goal kind of related to this and formalizing relationships with stakeholder organizations. So the tree board, I think, would be, could potentially be either within the planning commission or its own thing. Um, I know that's been kind of an ongoing discussion, but um. These folks could be kind of like tree advocates in the city. They could help make those partnerships. Sations, they could help prioritize the staff arborist's work. Um, I think they would, they could educate folks on tree stuff, tree regulations. I think they could just kind of like an additional set of outreach.
They're also your ambassadors to the community that get the word out about trees, so they're educating their neighborhoods. Your service groups, those people.
I I think the value of a tree board, my my opinion, might be uh. They're directing the arborist and helping the arborist prioritize. And I I see the arborist reporting to a tree board quarterly. Like, here are the things that I plan to do, here are the things I plan to do in the future. Uh, I'm not gonna be able to get to these things and 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 get some help and direction in in prioritizing the uh the tasks.
Yeah.
So I was earlier very skeptical of the tree board, but I think if if they could can. Make that contribution, it could be worthwhile. I like the idea of them being a subset of the planning commission or some other volunteer commission.
Yeah, in some jurisdictions, and I'm assuming this would fit the. Requirement to allow us to be a pretty city.
Yeah, that is, that is like basically the requirement.
Yeah.
City guys to have a tree board.
Yeah, and some some jurisdictions will give their boards or commissions um the authority to. Decide how to spend the money in the in the fund, in the in the tree bank fund. Um, prioritize areas much as, you know, like our arts commission, as their budget decides how to allocate. Just the thought, yeah.
Um, so just the last couple uh responses from the survey. Uh, support funding, what do you think about citywide special exception for urban forestry programs? A lot more folks are a little bit more skeptical saying maybe with conditions. Um, so yeah, I think when it comes to saying the city should hire someone, people are like, yeah, let's go. And then folks are asked if they want to pay for it. They're not so sure. Um, oh, that was it.
Yeah, I'll take backup. Maybe with conditions, I think a lot of folk perceive that if you have some sort of special exception, let's say. Three dollars per property, that sort of thing, that it would get psyched off into other. Areas of city government. And that's maybe where you're seeing here.
Yeah.
What's driving the major conditions. They want to make sure they're paying this for trees and really does.
Yeah.
And I think there's just a general resistance.
Here? Yes, I agree. Uh, some places um would use impact fees instead and put it all on the developers. Um, to have some sort of, you know, uh chunk of their permit fees going to. Pay for, yeah, tree programs, tree flipping.
That was kind of the call, so thank you all. I appreciate all the input.
I said there was one slide that I saw in my packet here that you didn't have on here, and that was. Uh, kind of the. Private tree cutting down. Thing I want to share an experience on that.
Okay.
Uh, my homeowners association, since I'm on this body, put the in charge of getting rid of four trees. The homeowners association. So I did my research, I found the forms on there, and importantly, I have to get a certified arborist. I have contacted five arborists. I've heard back two, one wants six hundred fifty dollars. It says four trees. I don't know how, but that's reasonable or not. The other doesn't do it and the other three haven't responded.
Wow. So you're saying our webpage should have a list of arborists that respond to calls.
I don't think we can recommend company, the city can't.
No.
I've been told we can't recommend anybody to people when they call.
And if you find somebody, be prepared to pay. I'm also on the homeowners board.
Uh, I guess that would, that would my other question I had is um. With this, do we also need to define how um how disputes are gonna be handled? Whether it's a private individual or property owner with the city or two private property owners, just for somebody maybe who wanted to pick out trees.
Oh.
That's how that's gonna be assessed and if there's any. Oh, that's how that's going to be assessed and if there's any mechanism for appeal or things like that. Because that won't come up.
Yeah, but property owners, they've always directed them in civil.
I mean, if it's something that requires, right, and this is going to be in the ordinance, you know, so then I'm sure will be. Tweaked and and hooked out a zillion different ways, but it depends on whether if it's something that requires a permit, then, you know, leave us with us and. You know, we have the ability to. Say you need a permit for that.
Yeah, right.
If it's, if it's too, you know, your trees over mine. You know, it's it's knocking down my fence or it's dangerous. Yeah, we we tend to stay out of those. If it does, if there's no permit requirement. Yeah, and that's true of all jurisdictions that I've worked with. If it's neighbor to neighbor, we can, you know, certainly point them to. You know, here's the. You know, the list of arborists you can talk to about whether this is, you know, the the tree is actually compromised, but. Yeah, unless there's a permit requirement or we have some other nexus to intervene.
Sure.
Um, yeah, not. Not as fun to try to settle neighbor disputes.
Yeah. It also potentially puts the city at risk of liability, getting in the middle of a civil.
Oh, no, absolutely. And I guess I was thinking more of. In the context of the rules, the picking up these rules with a private individual with the city is what I was thinking more of.
So if somebody.
Permit required.
Permit required.
The permit's denied. What's the?
Oh, well, there's an administrative.
We have an appeal.
Let's see it.
Yeah.
Because that that doesn't necessarily be spilled out in this.
They would probably point to our appeal process that's already existing for administrative appeals, which is. Yeah, Title Nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and then we'd generally those are handled by, yeah, the area examiner. So. Yeah.
I'm just hoping I can find somebody who has reasonable fee because right there are four other board members who want to have a midnight tree cutting party.
I have a, I have a, I'll send you the name of the guy we used.
Yeah, that would be great. The more names, the more people I can call. That's okay, I'll just.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, people turn in arborist reports with their their tree permits. Pretty frequently, so there are definitely folks out there doing it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll check and see if we get in trouble by giving a a list, a partial list or something, uh, would be. It would be helpful and and, yeah, we've had lists in other jurisdictions. I I get the the rub, if somebody's not on the list, then they're going to be kind of be, but.
Well, I wonder if that would be, if it would pass muster. If. Arborists could request.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, there was a goal that was proposed by the consultant. I didn't bring it to you all because I wanted to check with higher-ups first, but. Their suggestion is to have a special city license for arborists. Um. So I mean, maybe if it's something in that regard, if they're licensed with the city, then they could be on our website, you know, but.
Or they've proven some familiarization with the specific codes or.
I I guess, it it just wasn't, the way that they worded it wasn't specific enough. I just didn't really.
Yeah. Flesh that out, because I think it would be helpful um for folks to know where to turn and. Um, yeah, we'll figure it out if it's just, you know, having a. Have a business license in the city to do the work. I know, but, yeah, so. Yeah, so those who do, maybe they qualify, but we can also vet them. I know you've got to.
I have to introduce myself.
Yeah.
Yeah. Take care of you.
All right. Making notes on getting in our worst list.
So Roxanne, are we?
Yep, that's all I have.
Pretty much, any other things?
I just want to. Go over the point I made earlier, uh, again, uh, with uh, with with some of the things we've discussed here. I I think it would be very. Useful if you included in the plan you delivered to the council. To give them the structure of of what you've talked about tonight, like hire one arborist, have them be in public works. Give them four months to uh. Get the lay of the land and come up with a plan for the next twelve months. That would reflect the goals that he thinks and she thinks are most appropriate. And uh, approaching on that basis, I think it'll be a lot easier for people to approve. Something with that kind of structure, you know. Uh, and uh, you know, I think they will be that all these goals are. Are useful and uh, need to be addressed at some point, but. A qualified. Professional, I think might be best uh able to sort through them and say, well, look, we ought to start with this and. And let's let's figure out what gives us the most bang for the buck and let's put that into the plan. And then include the idea of a of a tree board that the arborists could present to, get some direction from and. And some guidance and and maybe some uh covering uh fire and. So I I think that would be a a very useful kind of preamble to uh your report to the council when you're asking for approval.
Right. Thank you. For that, and I have one. Small announcement for me. Adjourn, if that's okay, and it's just, I I will send this out, but there is um a training. Uh, webinar. Uh, it's called the Passport to Twenty Forty Four and it's put on by um. Uh, I think the Puget Sound Regional Council. And they do really great trainings, but this is specific to elected officials and planning commissioners. I will, I will forward you the email, but it is May eighteenth. Uh, it's just an hour and a half during lunch hour, a little bit beyond twelve to one thirty online. So I will forward that to you, but. You're going to be around May eighteen. I don't know if you're still, I mean, still.
No, I'm still going.
You're still doing.
There's something where they could.
I think they usually keep those those links on their website, so I I will, I will forward that as well, once that's been. Yeah, but they they do really great um. Uh, webinars, so I'd be encouraged.
Be great, if we could all look at it at leisure at times.
I know, I know, that I agree, but but again, they should. Um, post that on their website after it's done, they record those. Um. So, anyway, definitely.
And thank you, Roxanne, for a very good presentation. Thank you all for the very good discussion. Is there any uh next uh other business, next meeting, April sixth, update on outreach engagement? And greenhouse gas inventory for climate action.
That's the old, that's that might be the minutes from last meeting.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so next meeting is Thursday, April twenty.
More on con plan, I'll have more to report back. And.
This is great.
There's been. Couple of things, if I may.
Sure.
Um, I see that Pierce County. Is planning to have an outreach session for their con plan update for Gig Harbor. And I don't recall what the date of that is, but it'd be good to find out and uh might be something we'd be interested in. And having looked at. And the other thing uh I wanted to ask about Robin is. What the status of the housing uh assessment or housing survey is and when might we expect to see something on that?
So there's been, we were, we were shooting for like now to have that completed, what um. And I don't, I don't think I've talked about it in here before, but um, but maybe I did. Sorry, my brain. Um. So there's a dispute on the um between uh Commerce. And Pierce County, not. A terrible dispute, but a dispute in how the allocation um is uh was was established. Um, basically, uh Pierce County went ahead and and their um uh county council adopted. Their uh population targets and then the housing that goes along with that. And then from that. You know, they disperse, allocate um to all the cities and uh within their jurisdiction. Commerce has been kind of behind the. They've been behind and and almost everything in in in, not to fault them, they've got a lot of work. Um, with these updates, but um they just, they came out with different numbers. Different population estimate and a different uh housing unit. Um. Allocation, for want of a better uh term, based, they they use different assumptions. Uh, smaller household size. Uh, they factored in second units and and short-term rentals as, so you may have. Um, you know, one household, but more than one housing unit. All of that is to say that it threw Pierce County into a bit of a. The frenzy of what do we do now? Do we go back and redo? Because their targets had been adopted, they're on the books, it's, you know, in in. Um, in their code, actually, and. Uh, so they were faced with having to look at numbers that in, for some jurisdictions. Were almost forty, forty plus percent higher than what they were counting on in terms of housing unit numbers. So there's been a meeting of the minds, finally, um, a sort of compromise where um. For for Gig Harbor, actually, strangely, our numbers may go down. It was originally a thousand. Units that we were going to have to account for by income ban. Um, and that actually dropped down a little bit, but all of that is to say that um we had to wait. And we're still waiting for um uh the Growth Management Coordinating Committee, GMCC, uh, to accept this compromise. And um, yeah, uh. Jurisdictions throughout our region. Universally freaked out at having to redo their numbers and 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 go backwards. We're actually. Uh, in better shape than most because we hadn't done our our needs assessment and most folks had already done that and now we're having to kind of go back and adjust their numbers. So uh if the GMCC uh approves uh this compromise. Um, we'll have numbers that we, that are solid and defensible and that should come out um. Uh, end of May, something like that, maybe, if not before.
So will a needs assessment still need to be accomplished?
The the needs assessment is underway, it's it's almost, they're, right, they had to look, they're factoring the allocation to see. Where we need to be by income band to say, this is what you have, this is where you need to be. And and then the last part of that is to. Um, uh, give us some policy suggestions for how to get there, most of which are fairly intuitive, but still, you know, tweaks to our code. Um. Some other.
So might see this by the end of May then?
I'm hoping, yeah, that's, I I I will check in again. I I talked to the the consultant who's doing our needs assessment. Um, actually, this morning, um, and the. GMCC Growth Management Committee meets um on Tuesday uh next week. And so as soon as they have made their decision, I will be able to communicate that back to um our consultant and she'll be able to incorporate. Those numbers and uh finish up the the gap analysis and then it will be the policy prescriptions and we'll have that in our hands. And that will, we'll be able to feed that into uh the work on our housing element. So there is, there is one, you know, the numbers say, it's just, it's. Yeah, I like, I used to like numbers. And then I started to get into all of these uh, you know. Algorithms and how they, how they figure out, you know. Um, it's it's interesting, but it's um it's complicated because we have to have it be defensible. If we're going to incorporate it into our housing element, um, that then gets certified. So all of this has to fit. Commerce has to be happy with us and um and uh our. Pierce Regional, or sorry, Puget Sound um Regional uh has to be happy with us as well. Um, so we have a lot of bosses here, there's a lot of, a lot of cooks in the, in the kitchen. Um, more so, anything, anything could be quite as complicated as the, as California law and land use planning. It's more complicated here, it turns out, but but everybody's, you know, growing in the same direction, more or less, and that's. Um, yeah, getting our arms around where to put people as they come to our fair state.
Thanks.
No problem. Yeah, I'll give you an update on that when we meet uh in two weeks too.
Okay, anything, anything else?
Questions from the group?
If not, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I so moved.
Motion in two seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Motion carries unanimously, you're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.